Let the record reflect, we reconvene with all members present. For those who are able, I invite you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask you to remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
I'd like to remember a longtime Madison resident we lost over the last few weeks, Erminia Rossi. Lifelong Madison resident, passed away on November 28th after short illness. She was 72. She leaves behind her son Matthew and his wife Catherine, her granddaughter Caitlin, her sister Dolores, two nephews, two great nephews, and two great nieces. She was preceded in death by her beloved husband of 45 years, Charles in 2015. Erminia was born in Summit in 1951, affectionately known as Ermy. She grew up in Madison and attended Madison schools. She met her husband Charlie when the couple was set up on a blind date by her cousin. The couple married in 1970 and later welcomed their son Matthew. She worked as an administrative assistant for Equipped Solutions in Whippany, but her main passion was caring for her family. Erminia also enjoyed culting, traveling, going on cruises with her family, occasionally treating herself to a little gambling. She was a proud survivor of breast cancer and her family continues to wear pink throughout the month of October in her honor. So let us take a moment to remember Ermy Rossi and let us pass our thoughts on to the family and friends that she leaves behind. There are no minutes for approval. Welcome all. It's great to see such a turnout for our last meeting of the year. And this is John Hoover's last regular meeting before we recognize him at our reorganization meeting. So John, many more thank yous to come, but...
I was wondering why there were so many police here.
That's right. And to all, happy Hanukkah. We gathered yesterday for the fourth day of Hanukkah. Tonight is the fifth. To light the menorah, I want to thank Rabbi Lubin from the Habad of Southeast Morris County for organizing the event, which now is in its fourth decade in Madison. In addition, our Madison council members, other guests included State Senator Anthony Bucow, Asami woman Ora Dunn, County Commissioner Director John Crickus, and Kelly Guset from Congresswoman Mikey Scherl's office. It was a very... And also appreciate the support from the Police Department for that event. And back on December 1st, I hosted a young Brownie troop from Kings Road School. The Brownies proposed an ordinance, which I have, I take these scouts through a council meetings. So these Brownies suggested ordinance that every Madison resident would have to sing at least one Taylor Swift song every year. And if they ever heard my voice, I might be a tough one. But it was interesting, for the second mock meeting in a row, the vote came down to a 3-3 tie. And the mayor, who was not me, cast a deciding yes vote. So we should all start practicing our Taylor Swift songs. And then last Tuesday, along with several council members, I attended the annual Madison Auxiliary Police Dinner. And I know we have Johnny Grant here, one of our auxiliary, and probably some others in the audience. Sergeant Julian Morales did a great job recognizing volunteers who give their time at almost every major Madison event, which means they're giving up their holiday time very often. They are looking for volunteers, so if you're interested in learning what it takes to join Auxiliary Police, please reach out to Police Department. And we hope to have a presentation at a future council meeting, so they can really hear about what they do and how you can join them. They're often forgotten. We hear about the volunteer ambulance and volunteer firefighters. We don't hear about our auxiliary police enough. And if you've visited our Rosnet site, which is a set, our website for the Borough of Madison, you've probably noticed a fresh new look. So I want to thank our Communications Director, Michael Plessier in the back there. Thank you for all your work on that. I know it's not easy and takes a lot of shepherding, and it does look great and a very user-friendly site. And also congratulations are in order for our Borough Clerk, Liz Osborne, for being installed as the President of the Morris County Clerks Association. And don't forget tomorrow is the vote on the Madison School referendum. If you receive automatic vote by mail ballots, you should have received one already, otherwise vote in person, and it's all the same locations as the general election. So from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., same location as you did it for the general election. And I know our Employee of the Month is in the audience. Month of December is Borough Engineer Bob Vogel. And this is a bittersweet Borough Employee of the Month presentation, because this is the last time he can win it, because he will be retiring in January. He's been with us for 22 years and just announced his retirement. It's been a joy, and we'll talk some more about, but working with you all these years and working together, especially from my time on council and forward, making our streets safer for bicyclists, pedestrians, and being mindful that cars are also on them. So it's been a great partnering. So you've been diligent in all your work you've done with the administration to, and especially now that you're making sure we have a smooth transition after you leave in January. And our anniversary recognition is Detective Sergeant Ken Shannon, that's Police Department, celebrating his 20th anniversary on December 9th. And certainly, you know, I mentioned the fact that we had the menorah lighting, and which in Madison is in its fourth decade. We have our annual Welcome Santa Claus to the Town Parade, a day for Thanksgiving that's been going on forever. We are truly a town that is steeped in tradition. And, but that doesn't mean we don't come up with new traditions. So one of our newest traditions is the annual Drew Forest Song. So I would like to call up the Friends of the Drew Forest Chorus to welcome the holiday season and recognize the need to save the forest. So step up to the microphone and so we can capture this for those that are also at home. We're gonna cut, yup, well, you got your guitar. Yeah, fake, fake, face the audience, and that way you're facing the cameras. Ooh, we're expanding the accompaniments. You got a guitar?
We are the Friends of the Drew Forest Pick-up Choir, and we will be singing about the Drew Woods, a song written by Christine Hepburn, and it's called "All For the Forest We Need to Save" to the tune of "Over the River and Through the Woods."
Thank you so much for the song, but more importantly, thank you for all your work. I greatly appreciate it. Obviously, by the crowd, you're sensing that this is a special night for Madison besides having that song. I'm sure this probably must be a first, that we are giving the oath to three new police officers and a new firefighter, all in one night. So I'd like to come down below and start with this. I greatly appreciate it. Obviously, by the crowd, you're sensing that this is a special night for Madison besides having that song. I'm sure this probably must be a first, that we are giving the oath to three new police officers and a new firefighter, all in one night. So I'd like to come down below and start with this. Thomas Meehan, please come forward, and Francis Roman, your right. And Abby Roddy, please come forward. Hold on just a sec. Yep, you can hold on. Fiance, congratulations. And before we get to the, oh, sorry, just a little background. So not only people here, but all our residents, because you all who are serving our residents get to know you. Of course, you know Madison very well, because TJ is a Madison native, born and raised in town, graduated from Madison High School in 2015, having played both baseball and golf teams. He went on to attend University of Delaware, where he graduated in 2019 with Bachelor of Arts in Criminal Justice and a minor in History. During his summers at home from college, TJ completed internships at Madison Police Department. Upon graduation, TJ was subsequently hired as dispatcher for the department and has been serving the Madison community in that role for the last four years. TJ has a deep-rooted connection to the community and looks forward to continuing serving and protecting its residents. Okay, raise your right hand, left hand to the Bible. Holding the Bible is his mother. Repeat after me. I say your name.
I, Thomas Meehan.
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Justly perform.
Justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
Probationary police officer.
Probationary police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear truth faith.
And I will bear truth faith.
And to the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Establish the United States.
Establish the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
For the people.
For the people.
All of them.
Okay. And he's just been pinned with badge number 169. Because this is a family commitment and welcome to Rose City, so there you go. And have Santiago Randon, please. And your girlfriend Roxana, please come forward, and Mother Joanna. So a little bit about Santiago. Born in Philandia, Colombia, came to the United States when he was six years old, along with his mother. In his youth, he attended Central Avenue School, the Madison Junior School. Santiago and his family later moved to Chatham, where he graduated from Chatham High School in 2016. During this time, he worked at CJ's Deli, a very common theme we have here. Played soccer in high school. Santiago attended Kane University, in which he pursued a biology major. And throughout college, he also volunteered for the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps since 2019 and achieved the rank of crew chief. Today, he is an active EMT, certified police dispatcher. He worked in our neighboring town of Florham Park as police dispatcher, and where he associated himself with policing and gained a lot of experience serving communities. Santiago will be attending the Essex County Police Academy in January, and will be ready to serve this wonderful community that we live in. And one of the two things we have in common you might not realize, but one, we both went to Kane, but then when I looked at your address, I lived in your apartment 40 years ago. So a great location. CJ's right there. Raise your right hand, left hand to the Bible, repeat after me. I say your name.
I, Santiago Randon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Justly perform.
Justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
Probationary police officer.
Probationary police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear truth faith and allegiance.
I will bear truth faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Establish the United States.
Establish the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of people.
Under the authority of people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Very late, good luck. And our Brandon Lake, please come forward. And your brother Christopher Best, please come forward. And fiance Ashley Keimer. And if that sounds, the name sounds familiar, Brandon is married into a proud Madison police family with John Keimer right there. Thanks, John. Great to see you. Brandon was raised in Morris County, residing in Jefferson Township since the age of five. Growing up, Brandon participated in football and track, receiving his varsity letter in track freshman year. 2018, Brandon graduated from Jefferson Township High School as an honor roll student in all four years. In 2021, he started working at Freddie Dickinson University as a public safety officer. In 2022, became a Class II Special Police Officer in North Wildwood Police Department after graduating from the 62nd Class Cape May County Police Academy on April 12, 2022. Brandon is excited to be employed with the Madison Police Department, where he plans to follow in the footsteps of the soon-to-be father-in-law, the retired Police Sergeant John Keimer. John, Brandon enjoys spending time with his family, going hiking with his fiance, and fishing with friends. Ready? So raise your right hand, left hand to the Bible, repeat after me.
I say your name.
I, Brandon Lake.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Justly perform.
Justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
Probationary police officer.
Probationary police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear truth faith and allegiance.
That I will bear truth faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Establish the United States.
Establish the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of people.
Under the authority of people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Patrick Holligan, please come forward. Patrick's sister Casey, please come forward. And father Gerald. Patrick and his family moved to Madison when he was three. Graduated from Madison High School in 2014. Growing up, Patrick was an active member of the community, participated in marching band, bowling, and baseball. He studied business administration at Thomas College in Maine, graduated with a bachelor's degree in 2018, and a master's in 2019. After graduation, he returned home to Madison and quickly became, began volunteering with the fire department. Patrick served the town on the volunteer division for three years, achieving the rank of Second Lieutenant. He's enthusiastic to continue giving back to residents of Madison, serving the community that raised him. And what is not written here, because we had a great conversation at Christmas tree lot, is how proud your father is of your accomplishments. Even if you're not going to be a part of the authority police, this is even better. Madison Fire Department is the best, so. Thank you. Casey, you're gonna be holding the Bible.
Raise your right hand, left hand to the Bible, repeat after me. I say your name.
I, Patrick Holligan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
Probationary firefighter.
Probationary firefighter.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear truth faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear truth faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Establish the United States.
Establish the United States.
Establish the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And also I know that there's someone special you wish would be here, but your mother is smiling down on you at this very moment, so.
Just a little bit closer. Great song. Hey, there you go. That was a great song, and they performed it beautifully.
I did, I did. Hold on, take care.
We may have to bring him back for the rework. Kenny, Kenny Spencer's here. What's up with Kenny? Got a lot done in a half hour? You got a lot to do today.
Can you just, just as all, we can be all members present, so.
Yeah.
Okay, we have reconvened once again with all members present. And I'd like to say we've just accomplished enough, but we do have, it's a last minute year, so we do have other business to get through, so we will move on. So let's get to reports to committees. And for his last report, council president John Hooper with Community Affairs.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Downtown Development Commission and the Director of Business Development, please visit the Holly Village at the train station this season. Once again provided through generosity of the Madison Christmas Committee. Visit to Santik will again be booked through www.rosecitychristmas.com. There are two more Saturdays with Secret Santa giveaway in downtown Carroll Lake. Look for them on December sixteenth and twenty-third. The Downtown Development Commission will meet on Thursday, December fourteenth, seven fifteen, in the second floor committee room at the Holly Dodge Memorial Building. This meeting is open to the public and all are invited to attend. From the Madison Chamber of Commerce, the Madison area Chamber of Commerce is thrilled to announce the release of Madopoly, Madopoly, a limited edition board game, tailored exclusively to Madison, New Jersey. I saw this game and it's spectacular. Price at forty dollars, Madopoly is now available at the following locations. Alfred's Sport Shop, Madison Pharmacy, the Union of Early Trades and Crafts, the Nature of Reading Workshop, the Pink Bear, and tons of toys, supplies are limited. Madison Community Arts Center. The Madison Weekend of Dance was held at the Arts Center from Thursday, November thirtieth through Sunday, December third. Two of the four performances were sold out. Another dance event is planned in the spring. The Morris Community Homosely Dance Festival from April twenty-fifth through May fifth will include dance companies and dance performances, films on dance, a play about dance, and two days of music. As part of this, the Drew University Dance Department will present its spring dance concert onsite for three performances and use both the outside and inside spaces. Madison Open Mic continues its monthly run on Wednesday, December thirteenth at seven P M. Spalike Kids will present Madelons, a Christmas from December fifteenth through the seventeenth. Tickets are available at HTTPS, www.madisonartsnja.org/mcacs. Theater two thousand twenty-three was an excellent one for the Madison Community Arts Center. It estimated that sixteen thousand seven hundred people will have attended events at the center in two thousand twenty-three. They have a total of seven hundred and seventy-eight separate events. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works Engineering, Ms. Ehrlich.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of updates on some engineering projects that have been reported on before, but some news on three of them. The library interior renovation contract, the interior demolition work is now complete and the contractor is preparing equipment and materials on site for new construction at the library. A New Jersey DOT twenty twenty-four municipal aid grant commitment was received in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the resurfacing of Knollwood, Longview, and Valley Roads. And the Dodge Field Playground project, we have an update that construction schedules may require a revision to a late summer construction period to address requirements of a potential state funding partner to receive some grant money to help fund that project. Public Works, DPW continues to pick up leaves around town. Crews have continued to work overtime daily and all day on Saturdays with multiple crews detailed to leaf pickup. As soon as they finish with the bulk of leaves, the vacuums and the street sweeper will be sent out for a cleanup as they do every year. Next crews will be moving on to leaf collection at the municipal parks. Based on input from Shade Tree and the Environmental Commission volunteers, three sites for a Leave the Leaves demonstration program have been selected. At Boundgartner Park off of Morris Place, in the lawn area on Danforth by the water tower, and at the corners of Morris Place and Madison Ave, leaves will be mulched with the mower rather than blown and collected. And finally, the ice rink will be set up for ice skating as the weather allows. The rink is not filled when we're still getting these warm weather periods due to evaporation of the water. But if a solid below freezing cold spell is forecast, Public Works will fill the rink and will hopefully get some skating in this winter. The Environmental Commission is highlighting the borough's leadership in providing enhanced waste stream diversion. Materials including fabric and textiles, electronics, and hard styrofoam packaging blocks are all collected at the John Street Recycling Center. At the sixty-two Kings Road parking lot behind Public Safety, there is a Javas compost collection bin provided for Javas compost subscribers to drop off their compostable waste between home pickups. The styrofoam and Javas compost drop off surfaces are available to Chatham residents as well through a shared services agreement. The Environmental Commission also commends the borough for committing to replace the trees removed for the construction of the new pickleball court at the AMRC. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Utilities, Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Water Department, the department repaired a leaking hydrant on Park Lane. And the department was busy with water utility location markouts due to public services renewal of their gas mains and services in the Morris Place and Fairwoods sections of town. From the Electric Department, the Electric Department installed a new two hundred amp three-phase temporary service at one twenty Madison Avenue, the site of the new mosque. The department has started their semi-annual underground transformer vault and manhole maintenance where they remove the debris and stormwater and check equipment connections and gauges. And finally, Ed Jinks, their consulting engineer, conducted arc flash training for the Electric Department personnel at both the James Park and Kings Road substations. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, Mr. Range.
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, an exciting night for public safety. So congratulations to our three new probationary police officers and our new firefighter. From the Police Department, on Sunday, that was yesterday, December tenth, officers from the Madison Police Department joined mayor, council members, and the community at the menorah lighting celebration hosted by the Abbot of Southeast Morris County. While the weather forced relocation to the event inside, all present enjoyed a joyous and especially meaningful celebration this year. On December twentieth, the police personnel will take part in the Winter Solstice on Waverly Place event at six P M. This event is hosted by the Interfaith Council and it represents the longest night of the year. And we hope that you'll come out and join us for that event on the twentieth. And following the Christmas parade this year, following the annual tradition, the award of the Vince, of the Chief Vince, indeed, Characo Officer of the Year Award was made. And this year, that award went to patrolman Renato Capilius, who is the recipient of that award. And that's voted by his fellow members of the Police Department. So congratulations to him for his hard work and dedication to the department and the residents of Madison. And tonight, from the Fire Department. In the month of November, the Fire Department responded to twenty-six general alarms, eighteen still alarms, conducted nineteen investigations, and responded to sixty-seven medical calls for a total of a hundred and thirty calls. So far this year, the Fire Department has responded to one thousand three hundred and twenty emergency calls. A few calls of note recently, on December first, the Fire Department responded to a reported fire at forty-one Crosspec Street. Firefighters upon arrival found a dumpster on fire which had started to extend into the house that was under construction. Firefighters were quickly able to extinguish the fire in the dumpster and stop the fire that had extended into the house. On December fourth, the Fire Department responded to a car fire on Route twenty-four. And on the ninth, they responded to a mutual aid structure fire in Whippany. And in sort of the unusual events for today from the Fire Department, today, they responded to a residence where a Roomba robot vacuum had driven itself into a fireplace and had ignited. The homeowner was able to extinguish the robot before the Fire Department arrived, avoiding what could have potentially been a very serious incident. Sadly, the vacuum did not survive. The Fire Department, along with members of the Police Department, have completed the New Jersey Transit Rail Safety First Responder Course, where some of our members traveled to the New Jersey Transit Yard in Carney, where we did hands-on training with locomotives and passenger cars. And lastly, tonight from the Joint Municipal Court, a reminder that the twenty twenty-four court session calendar has been finalized and Madison cases will be heard on the second and fourth Wednesday of each month. And this upcoming Wednesday at five P M in the committee room here in Hartley Dodge, the Joint Municipal Court Committee will be meeting for its final meeting of twenty twenty-three. That's all tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
With Roomba, I guess that's our first example of artificial unintelligence. With health. But that's probably a boost. Okay, wow. I'm gonna make a joke about one of my presentations too, Mayor. So thank you, Mayor, and pulling the tense tonight. The health education report from the Madison Board of Health, our soon-to-be-ended relationship with the Bloomfield Board of Health has been coordinating with the Westfield Health Department, in communication with Amy Lewis, who is Westfield's alliance coordinator and health educator. They have been coordinating some grant paperwork. A formal notification was received that all the grants that had been appropriated to Madison through the Bloomfield Board of Health will now be honored by the state and transferred to the Westfield Board of Health. So we have some money coming to us to use for certain aspects of improving our health offerings in the borough. From the nursing, on December sixth, there was a blood pressure clinic. It was held at the Madison Housing Authority Rexford Tucker Apartments. In the afternoon, six residents attended, five were revisits, one was new. Then, the following day, there was a flu vaccine clinic. There's been four people who participated and took flu vaccines and they're expecting to have more tomorrow. There's only been one case of COVID reported in Madison at Sunrise, and it's under control right now. No other cases officially reported. On the environmental side, on December second, a rabies clinic was held at the Madison Department of Public Works from ten to twelve, ten A M to twelve P M. There were seventy-seven rabies shots administered, seventy dogs and seventy cats. And they're usually on a every-two-year cycle. So they'll be back again in two years, these people, hopefully. Madison schools requested additional inspections of the schools prior to year end, and our health director conducted the inspections. The Madison schools got clearance that they're fine. What else we got, Mayor? We have here, oh, so in twenty twenty-four, the Board of Health will be conducting community health assessments. We will be collecting data from community members and stakeholders to identify key health needs and assets in our community. The data will be used to help better serve health-related needs of the local residents. For example, the community health assessment results can be used to inform areas that require improvement by the Board of Health to strengthen our partnerships with different organizations, improve community coordination, and acquire more knowledge about the public health of the areas assessed. We will have health outcomes. We will review health behaviors around physical activity, nutrition, and tobacco and substance abuse. We will consider factors influencing the community's health, food access, transportation, housing, and communication. And we will also have a better idea of participant demographics. Our objective is to try and get as many residents as possible to participate. Then we will have better metrics to be able to measure exactly how our community is doing on this health assessment. That's all, Mayor. Thank you very much. Finance Bureau Clerk, Ms. Hana.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Finance Department.
Uh, from the Finance Department, tonight we have three important Finance Department items on the agenda. First, we'll have a short discussion with the Chief Financial Officer on the Five-Year Capital Plan. The plan is already available for viewing on Rosenet under the Annual Budget Process page. The CFO, Administrator, Tax Collector, and Engineer have worked on the various depart, with the various department heads to develop the comprehensive plan. Increased costs due to supply chain issues and inflation, along with other budgetary pressures, are forcing us to be cautious with municipally-funded capital projects. But keep in mind that we will have significant projects already underway that are funded by state and federal dollars, including the library renovation. It's important to note, this is a plan, it's not set in stone. In order for a project to receive funding, the council must take action at two separate council meetings. The council would introduce a funding ordinance at one meeting, the ordinance would be advertised, and then a hearing would happen at a second council meeting at least two weeks later. The Five-Year Capital Plan helps us manage and understand upcoming capital projects. The second capital item on the budget, or on the agenda, is budget transfers. State statute permits transfer of funds from one budget line to another during the last two months of the current budget year and the first three months of the following year. There are a number of statutory cap-related restrictions on how funds can be transferred. Our official state budget document has hundreds of lines in it, and the only way to move funds from one line to another is by transferring it by resolution. The third item for this evening is the funding of the solar carport. The upcoming presentation will show the project cash flows along with the expected rebates and savings. While I wasn't on the council at the time, uh, the governing body did introduce ordinance 332023 at the May 8th council meeting, and there was a hearing and adoption of the ordinance at the May, May 22nd meeting. This was a bond ordinance to appropriate funds for the project. The funds are in place, and the construction documents are near completion. Administration will be asked for permission to move this project forward and go out to bid. The hope is to have construction over the summer. From the Tax Collector, the annual tax sale was held on Thursday, December 7th. One parcel has a lien sold to an outside bidder. This does not mean the property was sold, but there is now a lien against the property's title. The winning bid came with a premium of $115,000. This is an extra amount the bidder pays that we keep in a trust. The borough is able to earn interest on this premium while the lien exists, and we refund the original premium to the bidder when the lien is redeemed. As a reminder, the borough holds an annual tax sale for all prior-year utility and property tax delinquencies. After the property tax sale occurs, the lien holder pays off the outstanding prior-year delinquency. They often pay off the current-year delinquencies as well. Performing annual tax sales helps make sure that the borough does not have multiple years of delinquent taxes and utility bills on the books. And finally, from Communications, uh, as the Mayor referenced earlier, the borough website, rosenet.org, which has an average of 50,000 visitors yearly, recently released a complete redesign. During the six-month-long redesign process, the team set out with a focus on creating an inviting interface for visitors to the site while also providing easy access to the most popular visited links, as well as links to current event webpages. Rosenet is a responsive web design, making it compatible with tablets and mobile devices. We hope you will use it wisely. And as a reminder, residents are encouraged to register for Alert Madison, the borough's emergency alert system, by visiting alertmaddison.org. Alert Madison is used in relaying important information for road closures, power outages, natural disasters, and large-scale events. Residents can also receive updates from the borough by following social media channels on Facebook, X formerly known as Twitter, LinkedIn, and YouTube. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Move on to Communications and Petitions.
None received, Mayor.
All right, now we're on to our first of two, uh, invitations for public comment. This one is limited to the agenda discussion items and also the resolutions which all go through. So if you wish to, uh, comment at this period, you can comment on our agenda discussions, which include the Pilot Electric Grid Study Presentation, the MRC Solar Carport Next Steps, which you just heard a little bit about. Also, you just heard a little bit about the Budget Transfer and Five-Year Capital Plan, so you can comment on those items. And these are the resolutions that will be part of our consent agenda and also allow you to comment on. 331 is, uh, authorizing the budget transfers, which, again, we're about to have a presentation on. Uh, 332 is enabling resolution for Madison Recreation Center, uh, Green Acres Funding, um, and this is about 4,92,000. Uh, Resolution 9, uh, 333 is enabling resolution for Drew Forest for Green Acres Funding, 4,875,000. Uh, Resolution 334 is another Green Acres enabling resolution for Dodge Field All Accessible Playground, costing $690,000. That was already mentioned in a, uh, well, the, um, the grant funding is 517,500 towards the 690,000. Resolution 335, uh, is a authorizing final payment and change order to Halcon, uh, Inc. of $10,331, bringing the total to 339,253. This is for the, uh, pickleball basketball complex project, funded through ordinances 9, 2023, and 34, 2023. Resolution 336 is insertion of item of revenue to this year's budget, uh, and this is a, uh, municipal alliance, uh, grant of 6,000, $6,610. Um, Resolution 337 is approving location for Lafayette Trail Sign, which would, um, recognizes that Lafayette visited Madison on July 25th, 1825, with, uh, Colonel Stephen Huntine's Bottle Hill Tavern, which was located at the current location of the, um, Chase Bank at, um, the corner of Waverly and Main. Uh, Resolution 338 is, um, appointing Cynthia Mahafi to, uh, position of part-time violations clerk, uh, rated $25 an hour, at, um, up to 29 hours per week with no medical benefits other than part-time sick leave by the state of New Jersey, as required by the state of New Jersey. Resolution 339 authorizing contract extension for electric line clearance services with Ashburn Tree Expert of Cedar Knolls. Uh, Resolution 340 is, um, supporting New Jersey League Municipalities Conference Resolution opposing Assembly Bill 5659, which is related to, um, uh, workers' comp. Resolution 341 is authorizing contract with Ashburn Engineering Services for design and installation of a SCADA system, which is supervisory control and data acquisition, and this is the amount of $202,200, which will be appropriated by a second hearing of ordinance 57, 2023 today. Uh, Resolution 342 is awarding electric material bid to Anixter Inc. for amount of $49,051 and to total in use amount of $84,900, all funded through operation budget. Resolution 343 is rejecting defective bid of ECB solutions and awarding contract for purchase of new pad mount transformers to Anixter Inc. for the amount of $204,738 funded through ordinance 46, 2023. Resolution 344 is adopting new Fire Department rules and regulations. Resolution 345 is, uh, canceling taxes for property located at Block 45, Lot 3, which was used for religious purposes. Uh, Resolution 346 is approving property tax exemption status for Block 3701, Lot 11, effective, uh, December 4th for wartime service-connected disability. Resolution 347 is requesting Director of Local Services to approve insertion of item of revenue to budget, this year's budget, uh, for a county grant, a sum of $1,000. Resolution, Resolution 348 is authorizing the appointment of Johnny Rodriguez, position of truck driver in the Public Works Department, uh, at annual salary of $48,860, which is, uh, in accordance to the collective bargaining unit contract. Resolution 349 is authorizing the appointment of Andrew Bennett to the position of, uh, truck driver in GPW at a salary of $56,996, also collective bargaining. Resolution 350 is resolution authorizing amendment memorandum of understanding with the Borough of Chatham for styrofoam and food waste recycling, and Resolution 351 is the same, but with the Chatham, for township of Chatham. And then Resolution 352 is waiving permit and inspection fees for the Borough Affordable Housing Project, uh, which is about to become, uh, underway at Walnut and Community Places. So those are the resolutions you may comment on and the three agenda items. So if you wish to comment on any of those, if you're able to keep track of them, please step forward, state your name and address, and the agenda item you want to comment on. Get, get, get up to the microphone. Yep. Yep. If you're gonna be a future mayor, you got to know the rules here, Kenny, you know?
I saw the rules.
All right.
Yes.
Uh, na, na, name and address.
Yes.
So, y, y, this is only on the items that I just went through as far as comment. Okay. All right. So the Dodge Field, so Dodge Field fencing, so that's appropriate to the, uh, resolution. Okay. All right, so we'll make a note of that. Take us. We, we, we still have, uh, one more vacancy that we were gonna fill, also fill tonight, but that, um, has been delayed, but that will be, we're working on filling that. We don't have any resolutions related to leaf, leaf pickup, but, but we will, uh, we'll, we'll relate that on to our Director of Public Works. Yep, thank you, Kenny. Yep. We'll see you around town. Thank you, Kenny. Anyone else wishing to comment on items on the, uh, agenda list?
Hi, Claire Whitcomb, 12 Fairwood Road. I just want to thank the council, um, for this resolution on, uh, funding, Green Acres funding for the Drew Forest. It's, um, such a long and winding road, over the river, through the woods, around like several thousand turns, so just thank you. It's, it's great.
Thank you, Claire. Anyone else wishing to comment on agenda items? Seeing none, we close this part of the meeting, and we move on to our agenda discussions, uh, our Pilot Electric Grid Study Presentation. Rachel.
This is, I think, our final, it's gotta be our final climate action presentation of the year because it's our final meeting of the year, but, uh, we're here tonight, myself and other members of the committee, to, uh, propose a pilot program and, uh, frame that within the context of our 2024 climate action recommendations for the coming year. So just a reminder, this is the climate action process that was proposed in our climate action report adopted earlier this year by the governing body. The, the purpose of this recurring process is so that we have accountability. Every year, as you can see in this timeline, in the early part of the year, we will take measurements of how we were doing on our various metrics in terms of measuring carbon pollution, measuring numbers of electric vehicles, um, measuring how much gas and electricity we're using in town. Then during the course of the year, Climate Action Committee volunteers, excuse me, and other committees, work with borough staff, department heads, administration, to see what actions are feasible, uh, that we could take to improve our progress. And finally, at the end of the year, you can see the circle around December where we are now, we come forward to make proposals for recommendations for the coming year, ways that we can act in the coming year to improve our outcomes for our climate action goals in Madison. So, uh, tonight, we're gonna, uh, discuss that, uh, recommendation that we're making for 2024 and just give you a, uh, overview of other, uh, work-in-progress climate action initiatives that will be ongoing in the new year. Next slide. So, the idea of community energy planning has been brought up previously. This is a program, uh, sponsored by the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities and facilitated by Sustainable Jersey. The idea of a community energy plan is that it creates a, a template or a format for towns across New Jersey to make a, an energy plan for their town to cut carbon pollution, and as it says here, "Plan for Reliable, Affordable, Low-Carbon Energy." Madison was a little bit ahead of the curve. We adopted our own climate action process and climate goals earlier this year, but we are seeking to participate in this community energy plan program, uh, because it's a good format, we like the template, it's a valuable set of tools, and we can get a grant for filing this community energy plan. So the first step is to reformat the content of our climate action, uh, process and recommendations to suit the community energy plan format. Uh, the heavy lifting is already done because we've already adopted our plan and our process. We just need to submit it to Sustainable Jersey and the BPU in their preferred format. And then, as I noted, we received a $10,000 grant for our participation in this program. So tonight, we're here to talk to you about what we propose to do with this grant. Um, you can see, you'll see in the coming slides that we are proposing to undertake a pilot program to begin to understand better the physical properties of our grid, what transformers are connected to which meters, to help us stay ahead of, uh, changing requirements as electrification of transportation and building systems grows in the coming years. And I'm joined tonight by Dr. Peter Freed and Mary Ellen Hennessy from the Climate Action Committee, who are gonna take us through the next couple of slides describing the pilot program for grid analysis, and then I'll, uh, return at the end to just do a quick overview of the other climate action initiatives, uh, that we're looking ahead to do in 2024.
Thank you. I'm Peter Freed. If I have to identify my address, I'm 38 Morris Place, but, um, uh, thank you for having us for this presentation. Uh, if we can go to the next slide. Before, uh, I talk about the details of what we would like to do with the grant and the pilot program that we're planning, uh, I wanted to capture on one slide the most meaningful sort of graphic of why we think this is important to do and why the BPU thinks it's important to have a community energy planning program. And on the slide, you will see on the left half of the slide, a bunch of dots which capture the year-by-year total electric consumption for the state of New Jersey. And you can see the kind of variation that it has, has occurred over the last 30 years from 1990 to 2020. Um, and then on the, and that's taken from the Electrical Institute of America, which is a reputable and the, the standard source for that kind of information. On the right side of the chart, you see a electric consumption curve taken from the New Jersey State Energy Master Plan, um, published in 2020. It was called the Plan of 2019, one of those two, 19 or 20, um, and probably will be updated in the next few years, but it predicts that, uh, the, the growth of electric consumption that you see there for the next 30 years out to 2050, and you can see that the rate is much steeper than what we've been experiencing in terms of changes to our electric consumption across the state. Now Madison is typical of a lot of the state, and so we expect this kind of a curve to occur in Madison, um, as well. Uh, what is driving it? Um, electric vehicles, electrification of, um, home heating, electrification of water heating, and those things. Um, and in order to make the goals, uh, for climate change that are in the Energy Master Plan, uh, that's the, the curve of, um, electric consumption, the least cost scenario, they call it, uh, that they predict, and the point of the whole graph is that change will be coming at us much more quickly than it has in the past. With that, we go to the next slide. Thank you. Um, so what we're proposing to use our grant money for is for a pilot program to provide data, and it says provide tools to equip Madison's electric grid, um, to respond to changing requirements at a timely basis. Now, this pilot program will not provide the tools, uh, and it will not provide all the data. It is an exploratory program to begin to gather data and to examine the right tools that we need to do this. For example, the town just... For example, the town just installed a SCADA system that does communications and control of the electric grid at the feeder level and the substation level. Over the last few years, we're at the, ahead of the curve, as Councilwoman Erlich said, we install smart meters. So we have smart meters that monitor our systems at the meter level. We have the SCADA system that monitors and controls our system at the feeder level. We do not connect those to the systems. We do not know which houses are on which transformers. Those are the transformers that are on the feeders. So we want to close that gap and find out how to integrate all of that to manage our electric grid. We want to be able to predict and track the use at the transformer level, anticipate the impact of changes. What happens is three adjacent homeowners install electric car chargers and to replace those components on a timely basis, especially when the supply chain now tells us that buying some of those components has a two-year lead time. So you better know about what changes you need to make. So we talked about the challenges, we talked about electrification and supply chain issues. Let me show you one more slide. Bless you.
Bless you.
On the next slide, I want to show just two examples of the kind of information that larger utilities routinely make available and have available to them with regard to, on the upper half of the chart, capacity to absorb solar, new solar installations. And on the bottom side of the chart, the capacity to host additional EV charging capability. This is taken from the PSENG website. And on the top, you see maps, large scale and a small scale over here on the inset, where they can tell you at the individual transformer level whether they can accommodate without change a new source. And on the bottom, they do the same thing for each EV charge. So in their computers, they have all of this analyzed and they can predict this online, essentially in real time. These are both public websites that anyone can access. It is this type of knowledge of our grid that we seek to obtain through the pilot program and whatever comes out of the pilot program. With that, I'll turn it over to Mary Ellen Hennessy, who will talk about the details of what we're actually planning to do.
So just some numbers around Madison's electrical grid, municipal electrical grid. We have 16 high-voltage feeders. These are 12,500 volts of electricity that are throughout the town. And we also have over 1,250 transformers, which each supply five to 10 electric meters installed in residences or smaller businesses. You can see the whole schematic on the upper right-hand side. You may remember that a partial grid analysis was completed in September of 2022 by Professor Francisco De Leon of the NYU Power Engineering Lab. And that study reviewed the high voltage side of the grid, in particular, six out of the 16 feeders. And you can see in color on the lower right-hand side the feeders that were analyzed. And the conclusion was that the proposed municipal solar installations would have no adverse effect on the performance of Madison's grid. So now, taking that analysis to the next level would be a study of the full grid to allow our utility to plan for infrastructure upgrades. So first, we need to document the size of each transformer and which transformers feed into which meters. And it will be done using anonymized meter data. We will also need to record necessary data for loads on meters. But knowledge of this, as Peter said, will enable the borough to predict transformer and loading from both transportation, EVs, and building systems, which are going to drive most of the increase in electricity demand that you saw on the original slide. Thank you. As Rachel indicated, our climate action process is to recommend a certain action or actions for the coming year. And so our 2024 climate action recommendation is that the borough pursue documentation and analysis of our electric grid. What we're recommending is starting with a pilot program, funded with a $10,000 grant from BPU, Community Energy Plan, that we have. And it would fund an ability to basically walk a small portion of the grid to map the transformer and meter again on an anonymized basis. It's a very labor-intensive process. But it would enable us to collect results in a database. The learnings and the information from that initial pilot would also help in setting the specifications for a full-scale study and would also give borough staff opportunity to examine different software tools to enable an efficient study and also to figure out a likely schedule and costs. And then, of course, that would be presented to council with cost-benefit analysis and down the road, potential to move forward with a full-scale study. So now I'd like to turn it back to Rachel, who will review some of our other initiatives on pilot action.
Thanks, Mary Ellen. I put this slide in here because we really have two topics in this presentation. So I thought first we could talk briefly if there's any questions about the proposed pilot program while it's fresh in our minds. And then, after we conclude that, we can quickly take a look at the additional climate action initiatives. So, Mayor, do you want to begin or see if there's any questions for us?
It's not really a question, but it's one observation I think your group is doing a great job with is you're putting us ahead of the curve. You know, anytime, you know, we're going to be using more and more electric, that's a gimme. If you wait until it happens, it costs more. And people become inconvenienced, the grid can't support their needs. This puts us ahead of the curve that we'll be ready for the more electric cars, more people working at home, more electric, so this is a great process that you're going through. I want to thank you for it.
Thanks, Bob.
Tom? So when you complete the pilot analysis, are you going to have an idea of the upgrades that you might need, that we might need? And also, what would it cost?
So it's actually a step before that. It's like an information gathering, right? This sounds a little hard to believe, but right now, the only way that we know what houses are connected to what transformers is by looking to see which wires go to which house on the post. And if, as Peter said, five houses on that transformer all wanted to charge their EV at the same time, we might have a capacity problem with that transformer. So we are still at the step before we have that information, right? So we need to catch up to what the other utilities are doing, like PSENG and JCPL, who already know which meters are connected to which transformers. That was the map that Peter shared. So once we get a sample size that tells us what information can we collect? What are we missing? What's the best way to store that information and maybe simulate it in like a digital model of our grid? Then at least we'll like know what we don't know and then be able to make a plan for mapping the whole system. And then, when we have something resembling a model of our grid and the demands on it, the loads on it, then we'll need to use it to do what you're talking about, which is where are we stressed? Where are we already maxed out with these transformers? What physical infrastructure upgrades should we prioritize? Because we're reaching capacity in some neighborhood or some cul-de-sac or something like that. So we are not quite up to the stuff that you're talking about, but this is a step along that path.
Was there a timeline up there?
The problem is, we haven't done any of this yet, right? We don't even, we just got to get started. And, you know, I have to say, we presented this to the Utility Advisory Committee last week. They were very supportive and totally aligned with this proposal. One member even volunteered to walk the grid with us and count those connections, right? So people are obviously eager to get this going. Seems like a gap in our knowledge of our own system. So I think once we do this pilot program next year, we'll be able to predict or project a timeline to get the full study.
Excellent. So the $10,000 in the pilot program would go to the fieldwork and then analysis of that fieldwork?
That's right.
And who do we envision doing the fieldwork and doing the analysis to?
So $10,000 is not a huge grant.
Right.
We often say summer interns, right? So we have great interns that have worked with the borough with utilities and have helped us capture a lot of information and digitize it. So we are anticipating a program like that next summer. If we have more volunteers, the people that like to walk the neighborhood and, you know, look at transformers, maybe we could cover more ground. But I think it would be a kind of a grassroots effort initially. But I imagine that if council and administration see the benefit of expanding that study, that perhaps, you know, we want to use some perhaps, you know, operating fund or something from the utility to gather more information upfront so we can have a better sample size to select the database tools we need to use.
I was guessing it would be probably intern-driven, so it's a good plan.
Got to start somewhere.
Any other questions or comments? Eric?
Again, not a question, but, you know, certainly, without information and data, we can't move forward. So this is really the only logical first step. So it's really a no-brainer. And thanks for putting together conceptually what we need to do to get this whole process underway. So thank you to you and the Climate Action Committee.
So I'm sensing the consensus that this is the right direction to go in.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. So as I mentioned, the Climate Action Committee, on the next slide, you'll see we are very busy. We have ambitious plans to continue the work of 2023 into the coming year. I'm not going to read all of these to you. Many of these are the next step in actions that were already in progress last year. Some of them are recommitting to some items that didn't get prioritized in 2023. The basic idea here is to improve communication, you know, to residents and businesses with our community outreach. We want to improve communication internally so that we have more cross-committee and interdepartmental discussion about work in progress and how we can collaborate to move things ahead quickly. We want to provide more information, for instance, on our billing statements for Madison Electric Utility customers so they can see, am I saving energy? Am I, could I be doing better relative to homes of my size? Or how can we help people understand their own usage? And then, moving into some resiliency items, we have a strong component of climate adaptation and climate change resiliency in our climate action plan. And the last, I think, six items on here pertain to resource conservation, namely, controlling the quantity and quality of water that goes into our watershed, improving our green streets policy to include green streets, which is to say incorporate a policy for green infrastructure in our roadway improvements, and better understand the health and vulnerable populations, the health of vulnerable populations in our town, those who might be more susceptible to the impacts of climate change. So it's a pretty broad swath of initiatives we're taking on or continuing. I'll say that in 2024, we're looking forward to constituting the Climate Action Committee as a standing committee instead of an ad hoc committee. So we'll be adding members and formalizing the work of the committee because we can use all the help we can get to undertake this ambitious agenda. So if there's any questions about these items or other climate action suggestions, we'll take them now.
Questions? Big list?
Yeah, it's a big list, but last year, we had nine recommendations. This year, we, for the coming year, we have one recommendation. So we're hopeful that, you know, this helps everyone understand the priority that we're placing on this grid pilot program as our single recommendation for our focus and attention in the new year. And we look forward to updating you in 2024 on our progress towards our climate goals and the actions as we continue to pursue them in the spring and summer of next year.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Great work. Mary Ellen? Dave, yes. Thank you for your work.
Peter, I was all of a sudden drunk. I have a flashback and about to call you by your son's name. I went from Mayor Bob to Coach Bob in a second there.
All right, we now move on to the MRC solar carport next steps. Jim?
Dr. Freed, you're part of this.
Yeah.
You didn't know that?
Oh, doubleheader.
We're going to go quickly through this, but not to bury the lead, Dr. Freed and I, at the end of this, are going to say, hey, it's time to go out to bid and put these construction documents out and see if we can get this project going. So next slide, please, Michael. As a reminder, it's an 850 kilo H of electricity that can be generated. There's no tree trim. Oh, this is, I apologize. Dr. Freed, why don't you take that slide first? You just put that one in there.
This is just a reminder slide to take you through the process of what we've done over the last three years now. And it's, you know, it seems like a long time for future systems of this nature. It will be shorter because we did a lot of learning in going through this process. Started on the far left with a Sustainable Jersey grant, another one of these $10,000 grants that Jim Burnett suggested we use for studying solar carports on municipal parking lots. And we decided to apply for that. And getting that grant, we shortly thereafter selected Talva Energy as our consulting. And with them, we canvassed Madison and studied eight different sites and down-selected those by doing solar layouts, by looking at environmental concerns, by looking at residents' concerns, by underling outreach to local residents. We down-selected those eight sites down to three sites. And we planned initially to do all three of them with a power purchase agreement. At that point, along came the federal government, and they brought out the Inflation Reduction Act with a lot of environmental funding and with the extension of the investment tax credit that a power purchase agreement developer gets from the government for building a system. Under this new act, nonprofits and municipal governments can also get that funding from the equivalent funding of an investment tax credit. So late last year, we changed our plan to basically fund and own the system ourselves. However, doing this and being sort of learning through this process, we decided to do one of the three carports, the one at the Madison Red Complex. Along the way, last year, we did the NYU Power Study that Mary Ellen talked about in the last briefing. And over the last few months, Talva and Vogel have been doing a lot of work on technical specifications. It's a large technical specification package. And that now is nearing completion and ready to go out for bid. So we hope to do construction next year and be able to turn the lights at the end of the year.
Next slide?
So financial incentives, as shown there, state New Jersey offers S-Rex. As Dr. Freed said, there is a direct payment option for us as well. 30% is going to be the most likely amount that we'll get, 40% if it constitutes enough domestic content. But the definition of domestic content is still up for debate. So we don't want to sit here and wait and find out that it's nearly impossible to get to that 40%. We think now is the time to go. We have the funds in place, we have the construction documents nearly ready. The Inflation Reduction Act funds may change in 2025 if there's a change in administration. So we'd like to get this done in 2024. But those are two significant funding sources that we would be getting. And if we go to the next slide, we'll talk a little more about that. So we're looking at a purchase price of $1.8 to $2.2 million, federal incentive of 30%, and the payback interval, once we take into account the energy of thirty percent, and the payback interval, once we take into account the energy that we're getting and not having to pay that bill. And the S-Rex that we're getting, we're looking at an eight- or nine-year payback. We do have more detailed financials in there as well. The payback calculation, as it says, includes the revenue from the S-Rex, the ITC funds, the avoided costs of not having to buy the electricity, and the savings on our PGM capacity and transmission costs. Next slide, please. So not to bore you, but for those who want to look at it later on, this is an actual cash flow analysis. It shows solar production, operations and maintenance, the estimated S-Rex revenue that we're gonna be getting in, the value of the solar based on, quite frankly, it's a fixed dollar rate that we implied in there. I think electric rates will go up over the next fifteen or twenty years. Annual capacity and transmission savings. And so it basically shows that by year nine, we're in the positive, and by year 20, we will have made 1.8 million dollars. So I don't, what's, advance to the next slide, Michael. I think that's probably it. Oh, we have, this is information on the federal ITC timeline that we're gonna do, continue to do work, but we will basically apply for it after we've done the job. And there are other projects that are in the vanguard that are already applying for this, so we're gonna be able to follow their lead. We're not gonna be the first one out of the gate, but there is some question whether we get that, whether we get those ITC funds of $600,000. So if you recall, it's a $2 million project, $600,000. I don't want to say it's a 1,000% lock. Here's the letter, we're guaranteed to get it, but we feel confident that we will. And we'll obviously do everything we can. We're talking to our Congresswoman, Mikey Sherrill's office, and making sure that we're doing everything, everything right. I want to remind everyone that, as Councilwoman Honahan mentioned, we did a bond ordinance, Ordinance 332023, which authorized $700,000. Hey, Jim, it's $2 million. Why do we only authorize $700,000? Because in 2021 and 2022, we reserved funds in a sustainability reserve, if you recall. And then last year, because we had a robust year in the electric utility, we reserved $900,000. So we have 1.3 million in total of this basically already paid for. We had that money set aside. So we're not gonna have a problem, cash flow-wise, we're not gonna have a problem with doing it. It's just gonna be a question of whether that payback's gonna be nine years or 15 years. We will get a payback. This will pay for itself and make money for us for years and years to follow. It just depends on whether we get that ITC. And given everything that we're hearing, that we're reading, that we're following, and that the best research assistant anyone can ever have is looking into, we think now is the time to move forward. If you want to go to the next slide, Michael, that just shows a bigger screenshot of what the White House is saying in terms of how this process works. And then the next slide is what we're saying here. We're asking council to move forward with this. Basically, what we're wanting to do is really look at Bob Vogel and say, Bob, we gotta get those bid specs and test all the specifications done. You're a big man, we need to be a lineman and push this across the goal line. We'll do the, we'll get that last yard, whatever that Philadelphia play is called, brotherly shove. We'll get that across the goal line, and we'll get those documents out, and we'll see, we'll see. Is it gonna be $2 million? Is it gonna be 1.8 million? Is it gonna be 2.4 million? We'll understand a whole lot more once those bid documents are out on the street. So we're here to request council to do that, knowing that there are some, not everything is locked in, there are some unknowns, but ultimately that we have almost all the money to build this ready to go, and that even whether we get the ITC or not, we're gonna, we're gonna make money. And I should say that before we went to, before we go to construct it, we will have guarantees on the state, federal, on state funding with the S-Rex, shaking the sexinas. You get guaranteed from the Order of Public Utilities that you can build and then to get those S-Rex before you have to go and construct. So, how did I do, Peter? Did I miss anything? I talked a lot faster, yeah. I'm very sensitive since I'm, sorry, I'm a mayor, look at me, I talk too fast. So anyway, any questions?
So basically, we've already authorized through the funding ordinance, so unless there's objections, I think that this council's already made a commitment to this project. So we're good?
All right. Ready to go? Okay, ready to go. Five-year budget and transfers.
Oh, go on to the next one.
Bob Vogel's last five-year plan. So, Michael, you got the next one queued up? Get it? So Councilwoman Honahan talked about budget transfers. They're necessary. If you remember that big rectangular, legal-sized landscaped budget document that we have, there are hundreds of lines in there. There's, but it's not as detailed as the budget that Chief Mish has. Chief Mish has a budget for professional services, the budget for first-degree equipment, and the budget for other items, automobile repairs. In our budget, it says police salaries, police, oh yeah, operations and maintenance. And fire department salaries, fire department operations and maintenance. We run a tight ship. We create these guardrails so the department heads have to stay within their spending limits, but sometimes things happen. And Michael, if you go to the next slide, the resolution that's on for this evening highlights these transfers that we're asking for, $10,000 into the fire department because of overtime, $3,500 into the fire safety program because of the contract settlement that we had with the collective bargaining negotiations. We need to put a little more money in there. Police overtime of $30,000, again, the contract settlement, and more anticipated overtime than we had expected, legal because of unanticipated or greater than we anticipated legal fees. And then water, utility, social security, which is a little bit of a curveball, again, because we, there's only about 12 lines in the water utility budget. One of them is a separate one, it's the water utility, social security. We just underestimated that based on the salaries, so we need to transfer some funds into that. So you can see where the funds come from. All them, the first four come from the general liability insurance line, and the final one comes from the water operation professional services line. If there aren't any questions, we'll advance that resolution.
Resolution 331. Any other questions?
I mean, just one question about, so all the money exists just in the wrong line?
Exactly, yeah, we're moving it.
Okay, thank you.
Exactly.
If not asking for any more money. But if you're in the real world, you know, if you have a, you show a deficit in a certain department or a certain budget line, and you know you're gonna make it up somewhere in the government world, you actually have to take that money and put it so you don't show that deficit.
Yeah, we would be in trouble if we had a deficit at the end of the year, so. And we actually can resolve that over the first three months of the following year as well. So five-year capital, if you want to go to that. This is a summary of a 14-page document that was emailed to you that is also available on Rosenet, if anybody's interested, that goes through the various departments, road reconstruction, milling, stormwater, sanitary sewer buildings, and the like. And it's, it's always tightest in the first two years, and then it gets a little more loose as it goes on, like, are we really only gonna spend 2.8 million in 2027? No, I'm sure other projects will come up. I'm sure projects in '24, '25, and '26 may get pushed out to 2027. But I think we actually compared other tenants to a very good job doing our capital analysis. So if you go to the next slide, Michael, over the next 10 weeks during the budget process, we'll discuss whether there's enough money to do everything on this list. I believe there will be. Council will also have the opportunity to talk to various department heads, Bob Vogel about road reconstruction and stormwater and sanitary sewer, and Ken O'Brien about DPW, and the police, Chief Mish about the police department, and the like. So you'll have the opportunity to talk to them, and we'll have their specific five-year capital plans, which are in the document you already received there, and able to talk. We don't have any road reconstruction as a specific program in, we don't have any roads under the road reconstruction program, but we do have Cook Avenue parking lot in for next year, which is a significant dollar amount. And we still do have a significant milling and paving program in 2024. And as the previous slide showed, we have $3,962,600 in anticipated planned appropriations for capital. Next slide, Michael. Having said that, if we, if we get tripped up, if the budget looks tight, if we think we need to cut back, you'll see it on the five-year capital plan and individual lines. There is $1,125,000 of the 3.9 million that are three major items. The first is a $300,000 installment for the fire truck. The fire chief left, I'm sure he would advocate, don't delay, we need to make that first installment. There's $325,000 for a DPW 20-ton dump truck, and there's $500,000 for a sewer jet truck. So if for some reason we think we need to shuffle things, or if other things come up, we may end up deferring one or more of those for a year. The link to the five-year capital plan, which is on Rosenet now, is there, and the governing body's already received copies of it. And with that, take any questions? I talked fast again. I just feel like I want to get you guys home.
Any question, any question from anyone? Eric?
Just, just a quick one, Jim, just so we're clear. When you look at the numbers, 2025 has a pretty big upswing. But one, but just to clarify, some of that is based on projects we've already moved from last year, this year, to 2025, like Waverly Place Reconstruction, right?
Correct.
That's got, I think, like 1.2 million.
Correct.
Attached to it, so that's kind of accounting for this process that you just described, right?
Exactly, yes.
So, my mic's on. So then, so then when the department heads come to present to us, they're gonna start to show us what they're actually looking at next year, maybe five years down the road in some of these appropriations.
Yes, you can, we'll have the five-year capital plan available, you can ask them.
Right.
If it's changed, they better let us know before their budget hearing. But if not, we can talk, you can talk to them and say, how's this look? What's the price looking like? Why do you think?
Where do we get a 20-ton dump truck for?
Exactly. Exactly, yeah. We, Bob and I, and Chrissy Mahler, special thanks to Chrissy Mahler for her help with this. You know, we talked to the department heads and rang, and we kind of, do you really need this? But I think it's a good opportunity for you all to ask. For example, the sewer jetback, it's possible we could enter into a shared agreement and maybe get some funds from another town that wants to use that from time to time.
What is it?
It's exactly what it sounds like.
Sounds like?
It's a piece of equipment that, there's things that get stuck in the sewer system, you know?
It's a plunger for the sewer system.
It's a plunger for the sewer system. Really high-powered.
Yeah. Rachel?
Just a comment to say that I think this is, we are at the start of the time of year when we, and hopefully, the public get to appreciate the level of investment that the borough makes in capital here. We do not borrow money to pave our roads and improve our infrastructure. We balance our budget and improve the town year over year. And there's lots of towns who don't commit to infrastructure, capital planning like this. And this is just a reminder that Madison is head and shoulders above many of our neighbors in terms of taking care of our critical infrastructure. So I always look forward to budget season because I think it gives me a real feeling of pride of the work we do in this town. So, so thank you, and looking forward to the hearings to come.
Well said. Anything else? All right, thank you, thank you very much. We'll now move on to ordinance for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance scheduled for hearing was introduced by title and passed on the first reading at the regular meeting of the council, held on November 27, 2023. It was posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call it Ordinance 57-2023 for second reading and ask clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $230,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for the design and installation of a SCADA system and accessories for the electric distribution system.
I open hearing on Ordinance 57. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 57-2023.
Mayor, I second Ordinance 57-2023.
Any council discussion? Vote call, vote please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Rains?
Yes.
Mr. Harlem Hootis?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 57-2023 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there of newspaper following ordinance according to law. And now we're on to our second invitation for public comment. This is when you may comment on any topic. Same rules apply as far as stepping forward, state your name and address, and then you may begin your comments. Anyone wish to comment, please step forward.
Who do you think, Mr. Mayor and Borough Council Members? My name is Kayla Pang, and my address is 15 North Road, 1. If I told you you could earn Madison $3.1 million over 30 years without spending a dime, would you? My name is Kayla Pang, and I am a sophomore at Kembla School. I am a longtime climate advocate as the Policy Chair of the New Jersey Student Sustainability Coalition and a member of the UN Ocean Decade U.S. Advisory Council. And I am a part of the 75% of youth that say they are worried about climate change. About one year ago, I read an article saying that the solar carport project in Madison, which would provide energy for approximately 220 homes, was downsized from three carports to just one. While this change was financially prudent at that time, it signified a missed opportunity for an even larger green investment for Madison. I have spent the last four months researching that potential investment. I wondered, could there be a near cost-free way to finance those other two carports for a net benefit of providing energy for 160 more homes? The answer was a resounding yes. The solution? Green bonds. Green bonds fund projects that work to better the environment. They raise initial capital for the issuer, and in return, the issuer pays back fractions of the principal and interest yearly over a specified period of time. As an incentive for environmentally friendly projects, green bonds have a yield spread, on average, eight basis points lower than conventional bonds, which results in an estimated 5% decrease in the borrowing costs to the issuer. In other words, not only is this financially smart, but demand for the bond naturally grows. In my research, accepted by the Journal of Emerging Investigators, I modeled the financial performance of the two unbuilt solar power-producing carports in Madison financed with 30-year green bonds. I found that revenue from solar power systems successfully covered the annual green bond payments. Here's where it really gets interesting. By the time the bond matures, 52% of the generated income during the two carports' lifetime is revenue gained by the installer. The remaining 48% goes to paying the principal and interest on the bond. That is more than $3.1 million of revenue made from the two carports over 30 years. And there's no burden on taxpayers, since money isn't taken out of the town budget. By issuing a green bond right now, you can contribute to sustainable investing, clean energy, and the generation of $3.1 million in revenue for the town. My ask is for the Borough Council to consider using green bonds to finish the remaining two solar carports. Thank you for your time. My email address is kayla.pang@gmail.com if you have any more questions.
Thank you very much for a great presentation, and I know you had reached out about doing a formal, so I appreciate you taking your time to present. And our CFO is here, and if he has questions, we can, we do have your contact, so thank you, and very excellent suggestions. Anyone else wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. And we move on to what normally we'd have introductory ordinances. As the last meeting of the year, we cannot introduce any ordinances. Now we go to consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move approval of resolutions R331-2023 through 352-2023.
Second.
Any council discussion or any need to be pulled?
Just a quick comment on 344, amending the rules for the Madison Fire Department. This, the major update here is it allows us to create an additional position to help continue to support the transition with EMS services, the additional cap in position to support that.
Thank you. It's more of a question, but I think I know the answer. So 332-2023, we are authorizing the state of New Jersey to give us an additional grant to pay down our MRC debt. All right, Jim? $700,000, how much is left? Sorry, I, you're ready for multitask. Come on. So 332 is the resolution about the, getting a So 332 is the resolution about the, getting a state, the state grant, additional state grants for the MRC debt. So I was just asking, how much is left? We already gonna get this? We already get authorization from the state? This enables the, the application goes, so we, well, we've been getting, we've, we've been getting annual? Right. Green acres funding for? This is for 2024. And this is only, this can only be used for land purchase debt, not the improvement debt? Right. And how much is left on that? Can't be much. We'll have to. Okay, getting to the finish line. Thanks, Jim. Any other comments? Call, vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Harlan Pudas?
Yes.
Ms. Hanahan?
Yes.
The only new business is to echo what Rachel just said. Yes, we will very much miss you, but we will be talking more about you on, put on your calendar, everyone, January 2nd, 2024, right here at 7:00 PM for our reorganization meeting. And the other new business is to wish everyone a very happy holiday season as we wrap up the year, and we're gonna shake things up, because I'm gonna ask John Hoover to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, that's really nice of you. I must make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all.